Just for you. He's used to it.
Lori, are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sounds good. I've got six thirty and I'm officially calling this meeting to order, the Mount Vernon City Council, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting in Mount Vernon. And hopefully everybody's got their mics on. And Doug Shannon, Cindy Golding, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. This is Cindy.
Thank you. Okay. Doug, you there?
I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we should call it ordered here. The next item of the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented.
Consent agenda item three had already occurred, thought they had submitted a new permit, but they did not. So the previous comment that you approved is adequate for their purpose.
So basically, go ahead.
I would approve the consent agenda with removal of item three.
Move the second and move forward is consent agenda minus item three. No further discussion. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion here.
I'm approving the agenda now.
Agenda, yeah.
With the change. I just said that wrong.
Do I all okay with that? Yes. All right. Forgot to mention that we knew a couple of weeks ago that the council of West was not going to be here tonight. So that's... And next item is welcome communications. If you wish to address the city council on subjects that are pertaining to today's meeting agenda, hopefully you grabbed an agenda from the back chairs there. Please wait until that item is on the agenda, it's reached. If you wish to address the city council on an item that's not on the agenda, the process here is to approach the microphone, give your name and address for the public record, and then before discussing your item. And each individual will be granted up to five minutes. And so anybody here to speak to the public comments section of the meeting?
Me. Hello.
Since you reached out to me first, so in a second, I guess I'll give that opportunity, Cindy. Can you introduce yourself and your role?
All right. I am Representative Cindy Golding, address seven thousand Tower Terrace Road, Cedar Rapids, but I represent Mount Vernon in House District eighty-three. As your elected representative, I'd like to address some misrepresentation of legislation that was stated by community members at the last meeting and then repeated by the media. So the assertion that we drew a line in the sand regarding LGBTQ plus community is an exaggeration, it's false. We did not pass any anti-LGBTQ legislation. When someone makes this claim, it's a thinly veiled, politically motivated statement. What we did in the legislature and what was stated that our representative and the governor, you know, supported this bill, what we did was entirely about protecting children from decisions that they should make after reaching a higher level of maturity. We insisted that the children be protected from irreversible life-changing medications and procedures until they reach eighteen years' age. We did extensive research surrounding this transition in children. And I personally have interviewed and worked with researchers who were funding their own research, who were part of the... part of this community. They are researchers around the world in my job, who are researching the negative impact on children. I've met with members of the LGBTQ plus community throughout the session, and you will no doubt be surprised to hear that several members of that community were very supportive of the measures to protect children from the life-altering medications and surgeries until they were old enough to make such a permanent decision. The line in the sand that we drew is allowing children to grow to maturity. You might also note that Iowa law restricts children from activities deemed risky, such as smoking, drinking alcohol, getting a tattoo, and these even with parental permission. These are much less invasive or permanent than sexual transition. So this is not about anti-anything, this is simply following our normal procedures of protecting children. Another thing that was stated, we did not ban any books. What we did was insist that literature be age-appropriate when discussing sexual behavior. Generally, this included books that would be considered pornography. You could be arrested for it in any other setting. Visual and graphic descriptions of either hetero or homosexual oral sex or intercourse is not considered age-appropriate for elementary or middle school children. Highly descriptive sex trafficking literature is not a generally accepted topic for these age groups. We strengthened penalties actually for sex trafficking and sexual abuse of children. You might be surprised to know that repeated sex offenders could get by with it time after time because the courts allowed only the current case to be heard. So what we did is say that in the evidence with children, you could see if there were prior cases of child abuse, especially in sex trafficking. The misrepresentation of the intent of this bill passed by the legislature and signed by the governor is unfounded and politically motivated. Adults continue to be free to pursue their chosen lifestyle. We didn't do anything that stopped anyone over the age of eighteen from doing whatever they wanted. But children are protected from life-changing medical treatment until eighteen years of age. This is not anti-LGBTQ. It is not anti-trans. Instead, it is basic common sense. And for full disclosure, I have a grandchild who is in the trans community. Nothing... and many of us in the House and in the Senate have similar family relationships. Nothing here is about hate legislation or anti-community, it's about protecting children. And I'd like to change to one... So in this particular thing, I'd like to encourage you to seriously consider this precedence that you might be setting. Should you have something that promotes it, that other groups might seek your public support for their political agenda. But I'm going to flip topics now to carbon sequestration pipelines, which also imminently affects Mount Vernon.
For example, Golding, you're down about thirty seconds here, so...
Okay. CO2 pipelines, if they explode, there is an actual kill zone that isn't... hasn't been publicized. And I would like to make you guys aware of that as we get the information from the companies, whether they use eminent domain or not, whether they use condemnation or not, there's still a very real danger of a kill zone if there's an explosion. So I want... I will bring that information to you guys as soon as I get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Golding. Okay. I know there's at least one from the back. I mean, I should probably clarify. Council and staff, tell me if I'm wrong, but on the agenda you'll see a mayoral proclamation deepening the agenda here and that that will be based upon the discussion of the last meeting. If there are... and that's... We had a couple of different choices of what to do with that. We've been brought through three council readings, a press review, second reading, attorney reading. But I felt that what we needed to do at that time was to make the proclamation, and that's what happened since the last meeting, is getting a crafted proclamation, which is on H1, I guess. So... But should we take comments now, Chris, or should we wait until that point? Or what is the role of the group? Since there are obviously a lot of people here, I'm guessing it might be for that topic. Yeah, I know there's another hand up in the back, square that there, but...
Because it's on the agenda, two things. Number one, it's a mayoral proclamation, so you don't necessarily have to take public comment.
For that topic, yes.
Not to do that. This is the mayor proclaiming... Making a proclamation. Number two, I'm guessing this is just me out of... There is the mayoral proclamation, there's also no parking designation with Stonerock that I see some Stonerock residents at.
Okay.
Imagine we're split in the audience, so I probably wouldn't jump around.
Okay. I think you had the... gentlemen, you had your hand up first, so I'll...
So I'm sorry, couldn't hear for sure, so can we make communication about the proclamation now? Or will we wait?
Please.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt Hancock, five eighteen Second Street Northwest.
If you can hit the button on that and it'll turn green.
Kurt Hancock, five eighteen Second Street Northwest, Mount Vernon. When proposing the mayoral proclamation at the last city council meeting, the first speaker began by saying, and I quote from the recording of that meeting, "About three months ago, I contacted Paul Trevor, asking for help in finding a way that the city of Mount Vernon could publicly show support to the LGBTQ plus community. As I'm sure you're all aware, this has been a really tough year for this community and their families," and I quote, "due to all the anti-LGBTQ plus legislation coming from our state representative and our governor. I am part of several LGBTQ plus family advocacy and support groups in both the state and the Mount Vernon local level, and I can tell you that we are very angry, scared, and grieving. Many families are choosing to move, which is heartbreaking, to think that they have no other choice but to leave their city and their home. The public showing of support directed towards the LGBTQ plus community is incredibly important right now," unquote. So we need to be clear on what support is being asked for. First, if any person feels scared for their person or property, we have laws in place to address that. And I support those laws and will help uphold them in any way I can. And if I see bullying of anyone, I will take, and at times in the past have taken, all appropriate steps to stop it. But that is not the kind of support being asked for. Again, I quote the speaker, "This has been a really tough year for this community and their families due to all the anti-LGBTQ plus legislation coming from our state representative and our governor." And nearly end of the last meeting, one of our city council members voiced that same objection. So let's discuss some of the new legislation that you would be opposing. New legislation stops transgender surgery that would remove healthy sex organs from teen and pre-teen children just because they've been convinced they're in the wrong body. This proclamation means you stand for those that support medical alteration of young children. Another legislation removes sexually inappropriate material from public schools. One such book is All Boys Aren't Blue, a memoir manifesto by George M. Johnson, which is currently in the Mount Vernon Middle School online library as an ebook. I'm going to read an excerpt from that book. "You told me to take off my pajama pants, which I did. You then took off your shorts, followed by your boxers. There you stood in front of me, fully erect, and said, 'Taste it.' At first I laughed and refused, but then you said, 'Come on, Matt, taste it.' This is what other boys like us do when we like each other. I finally listened. I finally listened to you. The whole time I knew it was wrong, not because I was having sexual intercourse with a guy, but that you were my family. Promotion of that lifestyle is what this proclamation will be supporting. You will be supporting the sexualization of our children. Finally, think about what the plus in LGBTQ plus stands for. It means a full diversity of sexual orientation. And what does that include? In many places, that is beginning to include MAP, minor attractive persons, which is pedophilia. These stickers in this proclamation is not stopping violence against the LGBTQ plus community. It is promotional advertising for the LGBTQ plus lifestyle and ultimately the sexualization of our children. Our community needs to understand that is what you are supporting and promoting if you pass this mayoral proclamation and start placing MB loves LGBTQ plus on our city property." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Anybody else that would like to speak?
If I can interject real quick. I'm going to address your last statement. So the proclamation does not place the flag or that emblem on any city property. The proclamation is a mayoral proclamation that makes a statement for the month of June. What you described at that last statement would be a further discussion of the city council. I just want to be clear because there's a policy that they have talked about to consider on the flying of flags or any emblems of any sort on city property.
I appreciate you clarifying that. I just say "and."
Yeah, I just... I want to make sure that the proclamation does not... Everybody understands that the proclamation does not open that door. There will be further discussion about a policy that the city attorneys are considering at the behest of the city council.
Right.
So I just want to clarify that this does not necessarily open that door, but...
Of course, that sticker is already on the welcome center. And there's some question about, maybe it's not public property, but it has been highly funded by the city. So anyway, thank you for clarifying. You're right. Thank you.
I'm ready to speak to this. Kansas City Attorney on the side. Jerry Niederhauser, three oh six East Fourth Street, Mechanicsville, Iowa. I used to be a city council member here at Mount Vernon. And it was usually a four to one vote, me being the one. And I got a short thing. I'm not going to preach, maybe a little. One of our nation's mottos is written on our currency, called "In God We Trust." The crazy men and women with the guts to get on those little ships that were on their way to the new world were following in their convictions that no man should live under the tyranny of another human being. For them, in those days, the topics were God and government. And out of their struggles, they produced our founding documents that evolved into the most bountiful and generous culture that has ever graced the face of the earth. And if you don't believe that, nor read your history, I am concerned that we had been cowed into silence by an evil and deceptive twisting of our laws and mores. The difficult and often tenuous discussion concerning God and government are now referred to as religion and politics, and we're told to not go there. That's too controversial. It's too judgmental. It's too confrontational. Who gives you the right to judge? Our founding documents recognized the ultimate authority and ultimate authority in this country. His name is God. And we officially removed him from our public school rooms in the early nineteen sixties. That tree is bearing fruit and is on display for anyone that has eyes to see it. What about citizens who do not want this? And believe that this is a false doctrine that these people are pushing? What about those of us who still believe in the ideology that brought us America? And I would, as a former council member, admonish you guys to consider a sentence in the Declaration of Independence which says, "Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes." I know most of you won't call this a light and transient cause, but it's not something to change government over. And the attorney of Mount Vernon, who I read in the thing, said, "The city does not recommend approval of this policy." But he also went on to say that you could do whatever you want to do. I personally think it's a very bold move. Is there any... is there a dissenting voice on this, on the council? Even one? Anybody stood up and said, "I don't think this is okay"? Just curious. Anyway, I personally think it's a very bold move for your five council members and your mayor to think you have the authority to speak for those who may disagree with you. And I think it would be in the best interest of this community to at least have a public discussion, which I understand we're going to have now, and a debate, and debate the issue publicly and possibly even bring it to a referendum. I don't think this is something for a small group of people to decide. My goal in all of this is to foster a civil society. People think I want to come up here and be like this. Come on, okay? I want a civil society. Remember that our leaders kicked out of our school system fifty-four years ago. And by the way, remember when the doctor would say, "It's a boy or it's a girl"? What happened to us? I mean that. What happened to us? That they're putting this stuff in our schools and they're fighting to keep it there. I don't understand. And I feel I made a lot of enemies in there, but...
Thank you for your comments. Should we hear Houser?
Sure.
Anyone else that would like to speak this time? I've got somebody coming up right now.
I ain't going to ask, I'm going to listen to everybody else has to say, so I'll...
I've never spoke here. I'm supposed to push this button.
It's green.
Green, should be good. Just name an address.
Okay. I don't have anything written down here, but I just want to make a comment on something you said. You said you don't...
Oh, sir.
Name an address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Doug Plots. I live at sixteen twenty-two Ivanhoe Road. My address is Ely. My kids are in the Mount Vernon School District. My grandkids are in the Mount Vernon School District also. Like I said, I don't have a list of notes or anything here, I just want to make a comment. The proclamation says, "Recognizing and proclaiming the month of June as Pride Month in support of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community." When it says transgender, make no mistake, you support the whole thing. You might not think. See, we're kind of naive when it comes to things. We think we just... if people want to be gay, go for it. It's none of my business. If they want to push it on my community, on my kids and on my grandkids, then it makes it my business, okay? I agree with the last gentleman that talked, and I'm not going to talk about moral issues, this could be talked about in other issues. And when you talk about mutilating perfectly healthy chil... We don't allow kids to drink until they're twenty-one. We don't allow them to drive a car until they're sixteen years old. How old do you have to be to join the military? But yet we're taking kids that are ten years old and mutilating their bodies? I have a daughter-in-law who works in the medical field, and she told her boss, "I will not work under any surgeries if it costs me my job where you are going to mutilate and butcher these children and try to turn them into the opposite sex." And I just want to speak to you. You support this, you are supporting the whole thing, whether you realize it or not. You are supporting this particular transgender, okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Plots.
Hello, I'm Greg Payton. I live at three oh two Sixth Street Northeast. I actually have some photos I wanted to present to the council. I don't know if I do that right now. You can pass, or should I wait till after I'm done?
Why don't you start now?
Okay. Here's the photos, and this is actually a calendar. We'll talk about this in a second. All right. I'm going to edit this a little bit since I found out we have five minutes, and I know you said it's a subject that can be discussed later on. But I'm not a Democrat nor am I a Republican, so I'm about to talk about, because nothing to do with politics, the recent laws passed, legislation that was addressed at the last city council meeting on June fifth. When I'm here to talk about it, as a concerned citizen, resident, and father who wants to protect my child and fellow residents and taxpayers, from this slippery slope we are headed down after the mayoral proclamation recognizes June as Pride Month in Mount Vernon. I shouldn't have to say this, but I will, to give some context, so I'm not seen as a hateful person or called names, such as the transphobe, homophobic, et cetera. That often happens when people oppose what I'm about to discuss. I support people of all backgrounds, even those I disagree with unless they cause harm to others. Since I was a young man, I've been an ally, which may not seem like this in a second, of the LGBT community. I went to my first drag show when I was eighteen in Key West, Florida. I lived in Denver, I always attended the pride parades. And I befriended a great lady who grew up in Kansas in the nineteen seventies and eighties as an out lesbian, and all the pain and suffering she went through, I relooked my eyes. And as recently as two weeks ago, I attended the Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement One LGBT One-O-One Training Course. So I hope my words are not taken out of bigotry. During the last meeting, one of the speakers said that they have been going around town asking business owners to display MB... Mount Vernon Loves LGBTQ stickers in their windows, which is fine, and kudos to them for taking action. What I'm against is the way this was received by the city council. The same speaker said, "We went up and down the street to all of the businesses handing out these stickers. And by the way, one is hanging in the window of the visitor's center right now. So let me know if you want to take it down." That was followed by laughter from the city council audience, so you can see this in the YouTube presentation. This is a taxpayer-funded bill, you will understand, and it received sixty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one from Mount Vernon, Lisbon, and Lynn County. Will it be funny if we end up in litigation after being sued by someone or a group who opposes it? I don't think anyone here wants to pay for something that is a hundred percent lovable. And Chris said, "We could end up having it tied up in some sort of ugly battle." And like the other speaker said, that sticker is still up as of this morning. Another speaker said, "We could be supported twelve months out of the year." Where is the sentiment? Is it stop with the proclamation and maybe a few flags being flown around town? Do veterans and first responders get this kind of support? Do these heralds get a whole week or even a month dedicated to them? Nationally, as you'll see by that calendar I provided you, there are one hundred and fifty-five days where forty-two percent of the calendar year... fifty-five days where forty-two percent of the calendar year are recognizing LGBT community. How many more are needed? Here's the proof, if you don't believe me. We have approximately ninety-two businesses in this town. When I was able to gather, over the last few days, I've walked around town and have counted only twelve businesses that have this sticker displayed, so seven point seven percent. This contradicts the statement made by another speaker two weeks ago, who said many of the businesses have them displayed. This is disinformation, which refers to false information as intended to manipulate or guide people or organizations in the wrong direction. Perhaps this is why the city council feels they have support moving forward with this proclamation. Ninety-three percent of the businesses don't have this sticker. When I ask where it all ends, I ask this because I am concerned with parades and so-called family-friendly drag shows coming to Mount Vernon. I wouldn't take a child to a strip club or even a restaurant such as Hooters. There is no way I would allow my child to attend a family-friendly drag show or parades where there is simulated choking and whipping while tied up, flogging, partial or full nudity, walking a submissive, dressed in leather, with a leash while handcuffed, twerking children dancing for money and attention from adults, and adult males with their genitals on full display, et cetera.
Take your bed thirty seconds.
Basically, I just ask you in closing, I mean, I don't know where everybody wants to go with this, but I don't want to end up like places like San Francisco, New York, Chicago. This is a great town, I moved here three years ago, I originally grew up in Debut, left for twenty years, and we came back to raise a family. You know, people are fleeing all these big cities to come to a place like Mount Vernon, or even Iowa in general. Now, I don't want this place turning into a safe haven for predators, pedophiles, or like this gentleman back here said, minor-attracted persons. LGBT is about loving who you choose, TQ+ is about an unreasonable demand and bullying those who refuse to belly delusions. DEI has been talked a lot about in Mount Vernon. I feel this may cause a lot of division rather than unity, which we all desire, especially in a small community. The Mount Vernon CCG DEI statement says, "We aspire to create inclusive, safe, and welcoming communities." Are maps safe for our children? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payton.
Yeah, I'd like to get those pictures back whenever you're done, though. We'll see them tomorrow.
Anyone else have a ticket?
Thank you, ma'am.
Go up here first. I'll catch you next.
My name is Linda Kemp, and I live at three twenty-one Twelfth Avenue Southwest here in Mount Vernon. It is really disturbing to hear these very fine citizens portrayed as something to fear and to be afraid of. We have some wonderful people from the community of the LGBTQ folks that are vibrant people within this community, and it is painful to hear about nudity and talking about how they are to be feared and perhaps even keep your children away. My comments include that biological diversity in humanity is clearly visible and clearly identically scientifically based. While some religiously affiliated organizations may limit inclusion, the city should not make a clear, visible statement that those citizens are safe here and are welcome here and that we appreciate the talents and the gifts they give to this community.
Ms. Kemp? Greg.
My name is Rachel Harkin, and I live at three fifteen Fourth Street Southeast. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but I better, like, get an angry excitement. Can she speak up? I don't, I don't believe that.
Please speak closer to the mic, and I didn't test the mic.
Not Rachel Harkin?
Okay.
I don't think that LGBTQ people don't believe in God at all, that's not true. We have homeowners here that are transgender that pay taxes and work in this town. Instead of teaching our children to be afraid of these people, why don't we teach our children, like, acceptance? There are some wonderful people in this town that are LGBTQ, and I think it's a shame that this town isn't seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harkin. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Yes. Bring the mic down and name an address, please.
All right, so, hi, I'm Ada Jones, I go by the name Crohn, and I live at four oh two Second Avenue Northwest here in Mount Vernon. I'm here today to restate the importance of publicly supporting the LGBTQ plus community, especially in times like these. If you don't know me already, or have guessed yet, I identify as queer, among other things, and I, and many others in our community, am shocked and appalled by some of the laws passed in Iowa this session. These new laws directly affect multiple kids in Mount Vernon, myself included, and all of us are fearful for what's coming next, and many families are concerned with it. Now more than ever, direct support and representation is important, especially for queer kids like me. Showing clear support of the LGBTQ plus community will make queer folks proud to call Mount Vernon their home, and while I do appreciate the Mayoral Proclamation given a few weeks back, broad, all-encompassing statements, do not show the direct support that is needed right now. Also, it's not super accessible. Support needs to be easy to see and understand, and that's why it's incredibly important for the city of Mount Vernon to show support by putting a window clean with their window, flying a progress pride flag, and formally recognizing Pride Month. Thank you for your consideration and happy Pride Month.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anybody else? Public comment section, please.
Hello, my name is Kimberly McAvick Smith, and I live at five forty Forest Drive, Cedar Rapids. My kids go to your wonderful schools here. I didn't prepare anything, I don't like speaking in this context, but I can speak publicly. And Ada does such a nice job. I just, my oldest daughter is transgender, she's a wonderful person, she marches in the marching band, she likes Minecraft, she likes to read, she's completely normal, other than how she's perceived in her identity. That's really all I want to say, and the show of support means a lot to us, because we're all very happy at home, but it's really scary sometimes to go out in public and try to decide what bathroom to use. And I know that won't change any of those laws, and I know a lot of you don't want those laws to change, but just seeing that support makes us, like, take a breath and just keep living our lives and keep trying to do our best. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Smith. Anyone else? Yes, sir. I'll get you. I'll get you.
I'm Mark Banowitz, twenty-one eighty-eight Ivan O' Road, Ely. First, I want to say thank you for this time to speak. I actually spent nine years on the city council in Ely, six as a miracle team, so I appreciate you being there. Thank you. I'm not here so much to talk about the proclamation tonight, although this morning when I did go on the internet to quote the agenda, I did not see a copy of the proclamation, so I was not able to read it, nor did I see that on the agenda for tonight, it said under proclamation, it said "none," so I had not seen the proclamation that Chris spoke about to see what was all on there. But I want to speak on, for just a few moments, is this, the paper I handed out to you talks about the different months that are celebrated in the United States. We had just Lynn County, and I know that came up in conversation, I understand, in Mount Vernon, when Lynn County just passed as far as their proclamation of a month ago. We also had one supervisor that decided not to vote for it, so it was a two-to-one vote against the proclamation. The proclamation, two-to-one, one person against the proclamation, two that voted for it. And, and his reasoning was the same reason as mine, how can we go ahead and take a stand as a county or as a city and promote one certain group of people for a month, okay? What I have here is, as we go through this, I went through, we have, you know, in Mount Vernon, even Ely, Cedar Rapids, we have Black History Month that should be celebrated, Women's History Month, Irish, Greek, Arab Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, Pride Month, Caribbean American Heritage Month. These are just a few of what should be celebrated, but we're not, we're picking out just one in support of one group. So what I'm talking about this evening is, is how do we go ahead as a city, as a taxpayer entity, go ahead and decide we're gonna go ahead and support one group and proclaim that we're gonna stand behind it? We don't need to go ahead and actually speak out against it, we just have to be real careful as a, as a city of who we actually promote. That's, but I do know that came up in the county about that, so we did have that, one person voted against it, because they were not gonna be held in as far as being promoting of one, one group. This opens up the doors for different groups wanting proclamations, so I went even, even further this morning, and I dug some different things up as far as months that we should be celebrating in addition to what's on this list. We actually have a month in the United States that's called National Adopt a Rescue Bird Month. We also have Walk Your Dog Month, we should have a proclamation for that as well, because that's just important about one group. We also have National Bird Feeding Month, we, I've never heard anybody come up with proclamation for that. Pet Dental Month, we haven't, I've never seen that one before. Dog Training Month, Car Safety for Your Dog, all these are certain things that we should be all celebrating, if we're gonna celebrate one, we open ourselves up to discrimination if we don't honor all these other things. One thing I will leave, we actually had a meeting today to discuss this and what was going on in Mount Vernon, as well as, as Ely, we have the same thing going on in Ely with the pride parade coming up in Ely, other things coming up. In the meeting that we had today, it was simply stated this, how can we have all our soldiers through the years be killed in war trying to give us freedom? We give them one day a year to celebrate and say, "Thank you for giving up your life." We decided we're gonna go ahead and dedicate a whole month, one month, thirty days, to one group. I can't even believe that we'd be doing something like that. This is God's country, this is the United States of America, where all people are treated equally when they're born. We don't need to be favoring certain groups throughout the year. Once again, thank you all, and I appreciate the job you're all doing here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Smith. Just a thank you, okay, you're right. Anybody else have a link?
Gretchen Robinson, I live at six, six twenty, six twenty East, that's not really the address. What, where do I live? I live on First Avenue, two eighteen First Avenue.
Answer your question.
Okay, I live in Mount Vernon, Iowa, two eighteen First Avenue Northeast. First, I'd like to say that I have one of the Mount Vernon Loves LGBTQ plus stickers in my car, and I wholly support the community here in Mount Vernon. And secondly, I'm confused why there are some speakers who do not live in Mount Vernon who are speaking. I feel that this is a Mount Vernon issue, but I could be wrong, I didn't do my homework. So, I'm very appreciative of all the community here, and I want to support you, so.
Thank you, Gretchen. Anybody else here to speak at this time during public comment section?
Hello, Gens, Council, and hello to all of you. My name is Lauren Andrews, I live at two oh four Second Avenue Northwest here in Mount Vernon. I just, I don't have anything written down, I just want to address some of the things that I think maybe were misrepresented in what we've heard so far. One being the statistics about the majority of the businesses in Mount Vernon not supporting. I just want to point out that the only businesses offered the sticker were the ones on Main Street, so not the whole of Mount Vernon. Every single business was not given one. So I think if you readjust and look at your statistics, you might see that it actually is a higher percentage than several percent. Additionally, I wanted to say, maybe officially on behalf of the queer community, that the plus in LGBTQ plus never represents, what'd you call them, minor-attracted persons, pedophiles? That's a misinformation thing that's spread very often about our community. We do not include them, they have tried to succubus onto us to provide themselves legitimacy, and that is not something that is kosher at all, or accepted by anybody in the LGBTQ plus community. So, that's not what the plus is, it never has been, never will be. There was something else I should have taken better notes, I'm just gonna go ahead and go sit back down now. Thank you all so much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews, for your comments. Anybody else would like to take this opportunity to speak during public comment section? Going once, one, twice? Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the public comment section to the consent agenda.
Is approval of the consent agenda as amended?
Thank you. A second minute. Paul and. The motion on the floor to prove the consent agenda was by one amendment, if you're all okay with that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no public hearings or ordinance approvals, but this time, let's go to the resolutions for approval. First one is, to the fiscal year transfers. What's gonna happen again?
So soon. East France, or East Transfers are, well, half of them are for the chip reimbursements that we agreed to previously. The payment in lieu of taxes from water is basically our financials for, for water. Loss three is, has been designated to cover the negative fund balances in the LBC. Please keep in mind that this should be about the final year, the expenses are longer to be closed, so it'll be next fiscal year when we'll actually see whether or not, or where we're at in relation to profit slash loss. Grant ISVs have covered capital improvements projects, and they're covering what has been actually expended to date and then employee benefits. So, quite a few of them, that is the closeout for this fiscal year, so this will be the last for this fiscal year, but definitely not the last for next.
Comments? Staff, various transfers, the last few transfers. The motion to move forward, the motion.
I'll need approval of both motions, six dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-three A.
You did? Is there a second? Second. I'll take Paul on that one. Move, second, to move forward on the resolution, six nineteen twenty twenty-three A about speaker transfers, this is a roll call, so if we're ready, Marsha.
Turn one.
Yes.
Enzo.
Yes.
Harmon. Yes.
Motion passes. Next one is, the decision providing no, no parking regulations for that city in Mount Vernon. Anything to add to that?
So, for those in the audience, this particular resolution is for B Avenue from Third Street Northeast to Wolf Lane Northeast. Any communication that we have received has been submitted by Chief Shannon, and then you've received communication from all of the chiefs that relates to safety concerns and the desire to have the no parking put in place.
Chief Shannon, do you have anything to add to this?
No, the B Avenue feedback, I think you have all of that in your packet, we haven't received anything as of reason on that portion of it.
So I think, Doug, I just had one question. There is a, there's a temporary no parking on the east side of B Avenue, as you come up from the skate park going towards the north, there's a temporary no parking over there on that side, is this in addition to that, or are we going to alter that piece?
The only temporary that would have been there that I am aware of was during football season. We used to place temporary no parkings there during those activities, so we no longer, we no longer do that.
Okay, well, these are actual signs in the ground, going on the, the. Okay, well, these are actual signs in the ground going on the, the Wolf property. Starts from the Wolf driveway going to the north to the curve.
They the black signs or the actual posted signs?
No, they're actual posted signs.
Okay, so those are actually, um, in place, no parking at that point then?
Yeah, so we're going to have no parking on both sides of the street if we put this in place.
Yeah, and we can, we can definitely modify that as a part of this resolution as well, and just redefine that whole area however council feels fit.
I, I, I think maybe that needs to be looked at. And then the second thing I guess I would request, and some of the other folks actually brought it up as well, is, is around that curve. So the inside of the curve, not the outside of the curve, but the inside of the curve?
Correct.
Yeah, I know that was brought up in a couple of their letters as well, including my own.
Yeah. And there's been a mix of, of conversation, um, some want, not wanting any changes, um, some, you know, they, they feel that the parking on both sides, um, helps decrease speed of motorists and stuff like that. Obviously, I don't have a study to pull from for that, but I'm sure if there's, you know, congestion, it's going to cause people to slow down to go through there. Um, and that's what they believe is their, you know, that's a safety factor to consider as well. And then, um, the curve, I had a couple of comments on both, yeah, like you said, with both, um, blocking on both sides of that, and that's definitely, um, we can definitely do that as well. Beyond that, it's, it's more of just ease of access and going through from there.
Chief, thanks for sharing all the info that you got from neighbors. Is there anybody here from the public that is here to address the B Avenue Northeast? Pardon?
And again, this is intended to only be on one side from Wolf to the curve, uh, that west side, and then on the north side from the curve up to, uh, the T.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the T is Wolf, Third Street into Wolf, and the B Avenue is the portion that goes north into the curve. So instead of a 90-degree normal intersection at B and Third, it's a curve. And right now, Doug, what you're saying is that down at the, uh, at the skate park, it's going to be on two, both sides.
That's the way that this currently reads. Yes.
Which is, which is not what the resolution reads.
No, so it, it, it doesn't necessarily address that. So in a previous resolution, that parking was already eliminated. This is an addition, so kind of by de facto of adopting both resolutions, you've eliminated parking on both sides in that general vicinity. If you wanted to open parking back up on the east side, you would have to go back in and pass another resolution that would negate the one that was previously adopted by council.
In, in the way that this is currently written, if you're a patron of the skate park, you have nowhere to park except to park in the little, um, gravel lot that's maybe would have come, conveyed two or three cars if they parked correctly.
Or the ground that, yeah, they, I mean, they park on.
The school.
Well, yeah, the property owned by their, half of those individuals.
Yep.
The course of the public, what is the role of council on this issue? Is it clarified enough or not?
I sense a hesitation. So, uh, not having noticed when I'm riding my bicycle through that area, the signs on the east, um, and not remembering, uh, doing that, I'm not sure when that was done. Um, what's that?
It was after. That was prior to the curve up the street there. That's when that.
I'm not sure I was on council at the time. So anyway, if we're going to do this, I, I would prefer that we do both actions at the same time, so we're not, um.
Peas mailing.
Yeah, peas mailing it. I think from my perspective, it would be much cleaner if we, we do, redo the ordinance to remove the no parking from the east side and pass the no parking on the, on the west side.
I can do this in two ways. I can have you take no action on this resolution and add that particular language to this resolution, or you can table for me. I would prefer that you just table this resolution to the next meeting, and then I would bring you a separate resolution so that they're two, uh, resolutions that you can consider. Um, but that would give you the same effect, it would be on the same meeting.
First staff recommendation there regarding this resolution?
I would move to table resolution six dash nineteen dash twenty twenty three B.
If you agree.
I'll second.
Catch all that, Chief?
Absolutely.
If you move in seconds to table, does it need to go through a roll call vote for this? For tabling? Okay. Mark.
Herman.
Yes.
Turl.
Yes.
Ingle.
Yes. I have tabled, and, um, we'll sue this for the next meeting. Public's answer, okay. Third resolution, providing new parking and no destination from the city of Mount Vernon. This is the Stonebrook area, if I remember correctly. So, subdivision. Anybody from the public here to speak to that topic? Got any recommendations?
Again, you have, um, you have Chief Shannon's reports along with the maps and information that's been provided via email, uh, from various citizens. Um, you also received a couple more in brief today that had come in as well. Again, the, the conversation that has occurred in this area as it relates to the sports complex and the, um, knowledge or the expectation that staff is going to have to getting emergency vehicles in and out of the area, um, I think what our safety personnel are looking at accomplishing is, um, eliminating the concerns prior to the, the opening and use of.
So, one of the things I'd like to address is, in one of the, the communications I've received regarding the, uh, safety concerns, it appeared to me that the individual was referencing getting the, uh, equipment into the sports complex. And, uh, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but from, from my viewpoint and my understanding from safety services is that getting safety equipment into the sports complex is not going to be an issue because we can come from the north, we can put the ambulance in through the driveway that was planned four years ago. The safety concern is if there is a fire or an event at somebody's home in the neighborhood, and there's cars parked on both sides of the street, we can't get our safety apparatus through there, and there will be loss of property and potential injury to, to people. So I just want to make sure that everybody understood the safety concern with getting equipment in that area isn't getting it into the, to the complex. That's easy. We, we planned for that years ago. The safety concerns are getting to the homes in that area. Doug, did I describe that properly?
A portion of that, um, there are concerns. So the reason we chose one-sided parking the way we did on 15th Avenue is to allow the fire apparatus. They're going to be, obviously, if they're going to respond to the Activities Complex, they would be coming Palisades Road to 15th Avenue, up to, uh, Sixth Street where the meat raised medians are, and then cutting over on 13th Avenue into that driveway. The driveway section of that, um, because it's the or two curves, is why I have requested that we block off parking, um, for as short of a distance as we can to ensure we have adequate space for large fire vehicles to turn if they need to, or ambulance to come in through that standpoint. The roads in, in Stonebrook, um, are a little bit wider than some of our previous streets, so yes, they can approach through there. If it's an emergency situation, I'm not going to say it's not going to be slowed down on approach if there's parked, cars parked, um, all the way along the path. So that is the concern. Um, I believe Chief, good luck. You have his email, and I believe you have, uh, the director of the ambulance services email as well. That's the main concern, is just making sure that there is, um, clear egress. 15th Avenue and eventually 17th Avenue are primary roads that we use, um, and just like we have done in other primary roads throughout the city, um, you know, that's, that sees a higher volume of traffic because it's a connecting road with, uh, the, the side streets off of them.
The public's information, you did get, um, comments from fire, fire leadership, fire department leadership, emergency medical services, and police services weighing in on this topic.
Doug, I have one other question.
Sure.
Um, the, uh, one of the communications discussed, um, the, uh, the use of temporary during events, um, temporary parking, uh, which we've used, we use for parade during heritage days, that type of thing. Is there a, a strong feeling as to why we wouldn't want to do that versus, uh, permanent parking?
Uh, well, a couple of reasons for that. The vast area that this is going to cover, um, it's going from 15th Avenue all the way up through the Activities Complex. And then again, um, you know, the 15th Avenue portion of that being a connecting road doesn't change because it's, it's not always, it's not all about the Activities Complex. Some of that is because it's a connecting road, uh, between other primary roads as it goes through there as well. So there's concerns that way. Um, the amount of time, you know, how many activities are they going to have? Who's going to be in charge of that? Is that going to be a city responsibility or a school responsibility? I am not a fan of the, the temporary parking. It's fine for a parade route one day a year or something along those lines. Um, but on the frequency and the repetitiveness of this, um, you know, if somebody doesn't call in or doesn't get the signs posted, then who's, uh, going to be respons, there's going to be concerns related to that. And I think with the frequency of the activities or, you know, what they're going to have, you know, Dr. Bayton Horst is, can, can talk on, he's spoke on the schedules of events and the planned usage, but we can never anticipate. I know the permanent posted signs are obviously, um, people get used to them, and so they know what they are. Temporarily, you know, you're popping those in 24 hours, maybe in front of the, the event.
Okay. Well, and just so you know, I'm not in favor of the temporary, uh, myself. Uh, just wanted to, to get a.
Absolutely.
View on that. Um, I personally am in favor of that, being on a street, uh, Second Avenue North that has parking on both sides of the street and can make things very difficult. I happen to live at the corner where the street goes from one width to another right at my corner. So I, I'm a firm believer in, in, uh, having, uh, streets where people can move freely and yet still have access to parking. So thank you.
Now, I, I think Doug brings up a good point, and I think we probably not spoken enough. At the amount of, uh, work that goes into even the three-block area of downtown to get vehicles out as far as both police and public work staff is incredible, and now you're talking about 10 times the amount of streets. So there would have to be either an exorbitant amount of school staff that would have to be there on the day of the event, not only putting out these temporary signs or making sure that people are encouraged to follow them, or our, our staff is going to be tied up trying to track down the owners of these vehicles, have them towed, so on and so forth. The reality is, uh, even with the additional parking that is going to come with the athletic complex, and it's, it's not a slight of the school, I saw a dragon here at one point, but people are, uh, creatures of convenience. If they have an opportunity to park closer, uh, to the event complex, they will. It's already witnessed at the middle school, the old middle school. So if there were only five, maybe six football games per year, but this complex is going to be used for band and soccer and track and a number of other items throughout the year. So, um, again, it, I would agree with, with staff that, um, the likelihood of us being able to enforce this on all of these activities is going to be a much larger task than anybody in really realizes.
If I can interject one point real quick, it goes to something that Chief Shannon shared with the people that came to the public.
Goodness, Clarker. Thank you. If you gave us the right answer there.
I was using my cafeteria voice if you heard this fine. Activities complex, not sports complex, not athletics complex.
Name an address for the.
Great Big Horse, 1605 Palisades Road Southwest. I just want to interject one thing that Doug told the community, uh, meeting that we had in early June. This is very much something that if it doesn't work the first time, we'll come back to you and say, that didn't work, and realize that it's a resolution that, that could easily be changed if, in, after the first event or two, we realized that for whatever reason we think there's a safety issue or a convenience issue. So I just wanted to make sure as you think about that. This is not something that's literally etched in stone starting now until, you know, five years from now. It's something that we will pivot quickly. We're going to do everything we can. We want the city to provide enough manpower to, um, help with that area and get people in and out of our parking lots and make sure that there being good, good neighbors for those who park in the Stonebrook area. But just, the only thing I wanted to caution was just that, just because you make a certain decision tonight doesn't mean you're stuck with it forever.
When you look at the big picture, this is, um, this is new. It's a beat million dollar, whatever infrastructure improvement in our community, and regardless of how many resolutions we have, there may be some heartburn after a, a event or two, but, um, it's fixable as you mentioned.
So I would, I would have to echo, um, or say from a community member who has lived by the old Activity Complex for years and years and years, it can change, right? And having parking that's appropriate and timely for the people who are coming to those events is important too. But we had a huge fire up our street. There were cars parked on both sides. It was a Friday night, and it was packed, and the emergency equipment couldn't get to that fi, to that fire, and that house went away. I mean, it, it was bad. So I would hate for something like that to happen in stone. We should take our lessons learned and move forward in trying to do the best we can.
And resolution in front of us, number three, what is the role of group here?
I would, um, move resolution six dash nineteen dash twenty twenty three C.
Peter Hall.
Resolution providing for new parking, um, designations within the city of Mount Vernon.
And I heard that for the second?
A second.
Okay. Paul, that, that's that, Marsha? Okay. So no further questions, staff, or anybody, um, ready for a roll call vote? Marsha?
Ingle.
Yes.
Turl.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next resolution is for new stop sign locations in the city of Mount Vernon, mostly Stonebrook, if I recall.
Actually, the majority of these, um, stop signs are in Stonebrook two, the new Stonebrook. These are where we expect that any crossings and where we see, um, traffic points. So, um, nothing unusual here. We've done the same thing at Springbilly Heights. This is, just identifies as we get ready to accept and open up, um, these public areas that they're, these will be the controlled intersections moving forward.
Recommendation on?
I would move to approve resolution six dash nineteen dash twenty twenty three D providing new stop sign locations within Stonebrook vision.
Thank you, Greg. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah. Move in seconds, move forward with the new stop slot, stop sign locations, um, requested by Chief Shannon. Anybody vote on that motion? Marsha?
Ingle.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Turl.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to order construction of certain improvements, given preliminary plans and fixing a date for improvements known as the Davis Park concession stand. Moving on to order construction, assertment improvements, improvement of plans and fixing a date for improvements known as the Davis Park concession stay improvements project. Try again, Craig.
Counsel, if you will allow me, we're gonna, I mean, both of the next two resolutions are for Davis Park. So we bid this package together as one project with the expectation that the bids would come in around $420,000 to $450,000. They came in over $600,000. So the lighting package obviously is the most important. What we have over there is four bright floodlights. By splitting the two projects, the hope is at least one of them will be able to afford the lighting beams, the most important. But possibly bidding them separately will give us an opportunity to keep both.
Right now, we're looking for bids so that we can begin this work in the fall.
Yes.
After the season.
Correct.
I would move approval of resolution six dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-three D. Davis Park Improvements Concession Building Project.
Second that and Craig. Moving second to move forward with parking session boots. Ready to vote on that, Marsha?
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Herman?
Yep.
Motion passes second vote of the lighting project for Davis Park.
I'll move approval of resolution six dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-three F for the lighting at Davis Park.
Can you add a second? Second that and Craig. Two more for the questions, comments, ready to call vote?
Herman?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
That motion carries. Do you like to get bids in before 20 range?
Thank you.
Go to on, the next item on the agenda is the mayor proclamation. And this is the point where I'm going in with eyes wide open and I'm going to read the proclamation. Thanks to Lori for helping me write it. Thanks to multiple council members for giving me agendas or copies from other communities and so on. So I'm going to read this into minutes here. City of Mount Vernon, Iowa, Pride Month proclamation. Whereas the mayor of Mount Vernon recognizes and complains the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer Pride Month throughout the city of Mount Vernon. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ plus people in society. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. LGBTQ plus individuals have had measurable impact to the cultural, civic and economic successes of our country. And whereas the city of Mount Vernon is committed to supporting visibility, dignity and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ plus equality, it is essential to acknowledge the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principles that every individual has infinite dignity and worth. And that the LGBTQ plus community falls upon the people of the city of Mount Vernon to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness, provides support and advocacy for the city of Mount Vernon's LGBTQ plus community. And is an opportunity to act, engage and dialogue, to strengthen alliances, to build exceptions and to advance equal rights. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Thomas M. Waisberg, the mayor of the city of Mount Vernon, hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ plus community dated this 19th day of June 2023 with my signature. That concludes the mayor proclamation. I think we'll move on to motions for approval. First is the claims list, the last one that came out this afternoon to Marsha. Any questions?
I'll move approval of the claims list.
Make a death, is there a second? Moving second to the claims list, all favor, that is a voice vote, all favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is discussion consideration of Everbridge Nixol renewal vote. Council action is needed. Does she have anything to add to your notes about this?
No, other than obviously there will be an increase in expense for HubSpot. But moving to council's objective of getting more information out to the public of the HubSpot program is going to be significantly better than what we are currently doing. It will control all of our social media so that individuals wishing to post can post one location. It will preview all of our social media spots and then when it hits them, it will go to all of them. It's also a work order program so people will be able to fill out pre-programmed requests for action off the website. It will allow me then to track those requests. Who is to receive those requests and where is it located and track. So it's kind of a combination program from a work order based program to social media program. But we knew the cost was going to be slightly significant for the HubSpot transfer. Although in our research, the work order program alone is at least as much as possible.
Is DeNove opening the house this?
DeNove will house us, the $500 a month would help us through that process as well. Takes about $6,000 to get it set up. We had initially indicated that we weren't going to be interested in it, but we did a separate presentation with DeNove. Feel a lot better about the program itself. It was just just recently, just being able to track, for me to be able to keep track of the work orders internally and externally would be beneficial.
Is DeNove going to be helping us with our social media?
To a certain extent, yes. I mean, we will still have a designated locally, but from the social media aspect, for instance, if we're going to put out a weather alert, a snowstorm alert. Doug currently has to go to Nixol and then City Hall goes to their Facebook page, PD goes to their Facebook page.
It'll limit it so.
This will limit all of that. One individual could put together an emergency response and it will preview all of the social media accounts for them so they can make sure that what we're getting. And then hit one button to send to all locations. For me, for my purposes, that's great. The work order, workflow program is more important to me. But to be able to accomplish both with one operating unit, obviously it's exciting.
So it, it's still, does it still depend upon community members providing their contact information to receive stuff like Nixol did?
So it will, it does send out both SMS and emails. And if you do want email communication from the city, then yes, you will have to provide your number and email. However, you can submit requests without providing any of that information. And you can also receive the social media by following show sites. But yes, it will do, to a certain extent, it will do what Nixol is doing right now for $2,500 a year and yeah. Nixol is just a cumbersome program that doesn't necessarily always work. We've sent out alerts that have gotten to the public two or three hours after we've sent them. Some people will get an email but won't get a text message and they're supposed to be simultaneous. So what we've, our conversation with DeNove, they have said email, a mass email to the populace is easy. SMS, SMS, text messaging is glitchy at best with any program that they currently operate in. And they did admit HubSpot is not perfect when it comes to text messaging. And that's why the email communication will go out at the same time. But overall, I think for the investment, we'll see much more significant gains than we did with the Nixol program.
So feedback that I've gotten from people just in general about this whole Nixol thing is they're not intrigued. They really don't want to provide their contact information, but they desire the information. So we're still going to be in that same conundrum because they would have to provide their information, either their email or their phone number or both. Or they just take the opportunity to pick it up on social media if it comes through.
Yeah, I mean.
Make sure that we're clear.
There's no, there's no program that I have found that just picks up everybody's phone and tells them, "Mass, send what the information we want." So there is, there is going to be some feedback that we're going to need from the general public. But if they don't necessarily want to receive the emails, they may not have to. But I would expect us to use, especially with garbage and some other items, TP's in this program or Nixol doesn't necessarily provide a platform for non-emergency. I mean, we can use it for non-emergency based. But the space that we're, the texts that we're actually allowed to send out is so minimal. If we have a garbage related issue, we won't be able to fit all of that into one message. It's basically good enough for us to say, it's no emergency, this is the time that it's going into effect and what they.
So we would have a more, a bigger space to put the message out, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So we're looking for two motions here. One says we are not going to renew Nixol in June and we're going to move forward with HubSpot. I would move then to, I would move to not renew Nixol. For that motion, Craig.
I'll second.
That's a kind of G2, not renew with Nixol. Any further questions? Ready to vote on that, all favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next step, moving forward with DeNove.
I would move to move forward with DeNove HubSpot.
Is there a second to Craig's motion?
I'll second.
Craig, is that again? Questions, more comments? I was ready to roll that, all favor of that motion to move forward with DeNove? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item for more, discussion consideration of additional police department part-time employee, council action is needed.
Very good, thank you, Mayor. Just want to put out a request. We have an opportunity for a, to add on a part-time officer to fill in gaps in coverage that we experience. If an officer takes off due to medical or vacation time, different things like that. This officer was a Lynn County Sheriff's deputy for 10 years. He's a certified law enforcement officer already and currently working in the private sector, not in the public sector anymore. So he desires to come to our department and on a part-time basis as we need, maybe a shift or two a month from that perspective. Forecasting changes that we will be having and, you know, some possible medical challenges that we'll be facing that may decrease our staff for longer term coming up. I think it's a good addition and can help absorb basically any shifts that he would be picking up. Either are going to be festival time when we need more people anyway, or it would be replacement of, he'll be filling shifts rather than paying somebody overtime.
You've got some staffing challenges the next two months, yes.
I agree.
You've got a name in mind, but you need a council action to move forward.
I would move approval of offering the part-time officer position as recommended.
Thank you, Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
All correct. Moving second to move forward with the part-time employee for the police department. No other questions, all favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item for approval here is discussion consideration of pregnancy and lactation amendment to the city of Mount Vernon personnel policy.
This is provided in the language that was provided to us by the city attorney, due to changes in the federal law.
It's been vetted.
Yeah, this came directly from the attorney.
Anybody having questions, concerns about it, otherwise all accept the motion.
The only, the only thing that why is, is it required that we stay, that we state breaks more than 20 minutes in length will be unpaid? When the average time for a new mother to make this happen is 30 minutes? And I would argue that we are putting that woman under pressure when she's already under pressure. Because regardless if you have a lactation room or not, it is an uncomfortable thing to do. So is there a reason why we have to bound it by 20 minutes?
So the 20 minutes is their suggestion. Does it have to stay at 20 minutes? No. Are they suggesting that we keep a timeframe in there? Yes, simply because
I can understand.
For employment purposes, if they are in the room for hours on end and you do not have a limit, then it's challenging for us to enforce a personnel policy. So whether or not that's 20 minutes, 30 minutes, however you want to, whatever the council's feeling is, for me, my staff takes as much time as they need for those purposes. I am not opposed to changing that to 30 or 40 minutes. It's just a matter of how the council feels is appropriate.
Yeah.
Think I hear a suggestion.
I, I like the policy. The policy is good with the exception of being bounded by that very short length of time. I feel like that's too, too constraining and would put too much pressure on the woman who's trying to do the right thing. So if we could elongate that to 30 minutes, that would feel a little bit better. 40 minutes might be wonderful, but I'm not going to push my luck. So I would, I would just with the exception of, the policy stands with the exception of 20 minutes becomes 30 minutes. Would be my recommendation.
Is that a formal motion?
Yes.
Okay. Ed, then Paul, second Ed, move for the second that. If there was one change, Marsha with the 30 minutes. Okay. Motion on the floor to accept the recommended policy minus the time to last period of rounds for 30 minutes. Ready to vote on that motion, all the favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. On to the work report, new police report. Anything they add, Chief Shannon? It's an inclusive report, so anybody who wants to email, if they have questions. Public Works, Mr. Downs, anything?
I don't have anything to add.
Any pictures this time?
Yes.
I know you guys are kidding. Right, road projects going along pretty well, are doors on?
No. No. The work that has been going on the last couple of days actually coincides with the work that's going on in Palisades. So all of the millings that are being taken from Palisades are being deposited on the public works site to be used. So in and around, if you go out there now, around, surrounding both of the buildings are there. And they made a pretty good, quick course of milling today, for the entire stretch.
That's what I saw, yeah. Great. Thank you, Bill. Any else, any questions, Val? Parks and Rec report, Mr. Seivers?
Nothing to add in my director's report, but I do have the pool report as well, if you'd like to discuss that or I can make some highlights on that.
Okay, I want to interject, thinking of Parks and Rec, the flyer that's left at your place that you can hear from the console is from the art opening that was hosted by LBC Friday afternoon.
There'll be another open house tomorrow here.
Yeah, tomorrow, there's a question and answer. Yeah, tomorrow, there's a question and answer opportunity with the artist from four to five thirty at the LBC in the community room.
Now to you, Paul.
Yeah, okay. No, no questions on our report, I'm assuming? Okay. So you all have a copy of the pool report in regards to comparisons, for a nine-year comparison in regards to revenue and activity. I'd like to point out just some of the items I've highlighted in yellow that I've just brought up discussion points. And I can surely answer any questions in regards to that. Some of them we know, some of them we're assuming. Passes were up quite a bit in regards to the total number and the dollars. I think a lot of that attributes to people committing to a full year, or excuse me, a full season, if you will. Also, we're growing as a community. We have a lot of new homes, a lot of residents. So we're up from two forty-four to three fifty-eight in regards to passes. But again, this is, this is two thousand twenty-two. I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Not twenty-three.
Correct, yep. To flip the page to the second page in regards to daily admissions, this one has me a little bit stumped. I'm not sure what to attribute that to. But our daily admissions are down. They were down. Seven hundred, seven thousand eight hundred seventy-six daily admissions in two thousand twenty-one, sixty-one oh three in two thousand twenty-two. I'm not sure what to attribute that number to, other than maybe more people are purchasing passes than they are doing daily admissions. That's the only deduction that I could come up with.
We did have at least two to three weeks of loss in two thousand twenty-two as well with the water leakage and the broken glass. I mean, not that we would have made up a thousand daily admissions, but we did lose, lose some time last season.
The other one that stumps me is lap swim, participant wise, is down, almost doubled in regards to the difference between the two years, you'll see. Now, that isn't necessarily passes, that is paid, that is paid, daily, lap swims. So just want to make sure you understand that. We went from one ninety-three in two thousand twenty-one to one hundred, so cut it almost in half there. Concessions was, was a good year. Some months were better than others. Just all that, all that depends on weather and participation. So I'm not going to pinpoint anything particularly there, but we did have a better year in concessions in two thousand twenty-two than we did in two thousand twenty-one by four thousand dollars. With no price increases, just so you're aware as well, we didn't do any price increases for concessions. So that doesn't have an impact on that result. Our theme nights, which we did more of, was extremely positive. We doubled our numbers there. So we're able to do a lot more theme nights and get more people involved in those activities. So that's another thing on page two there. I'll flip to page three here. Water exercise passes again is down. From two thousand and forty dollars in two thousand twenty-one, down to nine seventy-five. And I'm not sure what to attribute that to as well. So our exercise, I think participation was also down. I don't have those numbers in regards to the number of people, but it's relevant to the revenue. So, but overall, for the whole year in regards to revenue total, one hundred thirty-six, four forty in two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-three, fifty-one in two thousand twenty-two. So our revenue numbers are up and that's a lot contributed to, from passes, from season passes.
Remind us when the glass incident happened.
Pardon me, Craig?
What month did the glass incident happen?
Um, June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My guess is that, just a guess, that for lap swim and for the exercises, that people had to go find another place to swim laps and do their water exercise and they just kept to it. And they didn't come back at the same levels. But for lap swim, it's two hundred bucks.
Yeah, right.
Exercise is thousands.
Other questions, Mr. Seiders? Thank you for a thorough report and thanks to Katie and her staff.
Thank you.
Moving to discussion items. Highway one, First Street intersection, right turn and red request.
Staff has received a request from citizens to study the highway line and First Street intersection. And basically what it would amount to is no right turn on red from east and westbound traffic. So north and southbound, we'll still be able to make that right turn. With the addition of the planer boxes and the parking that is allowed on the highway line, it's difficult given the hill and the inability to see to make a right turn safely. The particular individual that stepped forward indicated that they get so fixated on looking to make sure that they can go on, on red. That they forget to double check pedestrians crossing the street in the crosswalk. So staff isn't opposed to this, but because it involves highway one and the fact that we would have to involve B and K engineering most likely in order to make any changes. I thought I would bring this to you as a discussion item and make sure there was support before we expended funds to look at such a request.
I, I would be interested in any statistics on, in terms of accidents in that area.
Chief Shannon, we did on this yet?
We, we discussed it at a staff meeting and again, we, we do concur with the citizen request. We've, I think we've all seen near misses at intersections. And again, it is difficult to see. You do get distracted, obviously, by trying to see if you can make that turn. Be less convenient, but we're talking about safety versus convenience.
Ellen, cars going north and south tend to speed up to get through there, not slow down.
I'm, I'm totally in favor of this.
So what the next step I will do is just, I will reach out to Dave Chekinger to make sure that it's on his radar. And then he will know, obviously, what we need to provide, E O T, or considerations, if anything. We technically maintain the lights at that intersection anyway and this is where the signs would actually go. So we would just approach him about that.
Did I have a next meeting too soon?
Uh, yeah, probably an agenda item for two or three months from now, given that, depending on the extent that, that B and K, the work that they will have to do in order to make an application.
Well, what, that'd be table for several months then. It's a mayor, council administrator, mayor's report, still doing a stability committee meetings every two months, engaged there. Craig and I have a Chalk Air Stupus meeting this Wednesday down here, directly, you know, a block, yeah. And that process is, is moving forward and a lot, a lot of hard progress to show at this point, in Mount Vernon side yet. And continuing to take emergency management classes, another online one this week. So that's about all I have to, as far as the mayor's work. The council committee, anything to add?
We had a meeting with Cornell and the Mount Vernon Community School District last week just to keep lines of communication open. Chris was a meeting, Mary was a meeting. Amazing that those meetings have happened for decades before. Thank you, John Harb. You have reports, anything to add to your report?
Uh, no, just, I will be speaking on Wednesday and then I would imagine that will involve about five minutes of me talking about what we've been able to accomplish the last seven years. And I will post a question after that, so.
Chris, if you're able to hold it to five minutes, I will, I will buy you a coffee.
I do rather enjoy, I mean, presentation wise, I plan to limit it very much. I do think that those conversations kind of take a mind of their own when I start allowing questions and people to ask. So a lot of projects that are currently underway, Palisades again, they'll be working on coring out some sub areas tomorrow. Maybe the next day, but they aren't working at breakneck speed right now to get that project in. As long as, I can't believe I'm saying this, as long as we don't get any rain this week, it could be putting down asphalt. So remember, I, I do mean to remind everybody that's not aware of how asphalt is done and the steps. So there'll be a couple inches on both sides. It'll be left, there'll be a lip. They will come back and do another two inch lift beyond that and something. So it will happen in stages. Have patience. The finished product will be much better than what we've been carrying.
Is Candlestick project going?
Candlestick? Uh, Candlestick is actually getting bid as well. So if you notice, when we were looking at Davis Park, I actually had like three or four bids that opened that day.
Anything else to report? Any else that needs to come before this council meeting? Otherwise, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.